We'll have a moment, silent meditation, then pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's March 30th, 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners are here. Call to order, and we'll start immediately with consents and approvals. Good morning.
Hi. We have six inquiries for $3,660.21, minutes for March 23rd and March 25th, 2022. Vouchers: General County Fund, $40,773.84, 911, $95. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,008.09.6. Camp Muffley, $2,025.18. Mason Dixon Park, $1,005.33.77. Mon County Center, $2,068.10. Sustenance Valuation, $4,152.26. Payroll, $1,008,935.49. Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County, $24,665.67. Chestnut Ridge Park, $328.00. Camp Muffley, $360.00. Mon County Center, $348.45. For a voucher total of $1,008,651.82. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for March 30th, 2022.
Move to approve consent agenda items as presented?
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have two petitions. First one is to remove the execu- execu-rix?
Executrix.
Executrix. Okay, thank you. In the estate of Jeffrey Scott Lorita. And how do we want to move on that? I know we were waiting.
Well, on that one, I don't have any problem with... I have a couple of process questions.
Sure.
For one, we have a petition. That petition is asking for a hearing. So, is this considered our hearing? Or do we need to set a date for a hearing? Because I don't think it needs to go to a fiduciary commissioner. I just think that it needs time. They filed the petition on the 24th. It got mailed out on the 25th.
Lorita.
No, Lorita is the first. That's the other one.
Sorry.
All right.
My fault.
Can we just switch then?
Yeah. There's two of them. The one's really complicated.
All right, so let's take the easy one first.
Okay, let's do the easy one. Yes. That would be the Norman Louise Eddie Headley.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's two... There's two co-executors. One's filed to have the other one removed, and the other person isn't able to perform. It seems fairly simple. But it was filed on the 24th. It was mailed out on the 25th. So, anybody that would have any state, any say in this estate probably hasn't even been notified yet. And I don't want to take action on it today because it just seems like there should be more time for these people to become aware. And, you know, so it's a process question. So, are we setting a hearing? Or are we just delaying this until a certain time that gives a reasonable amount of time for anybody to come forward with any objections?
I'd make an motion to table this until next week's meeting so that sufficient time can be had for the respondents to receive the correspondence and then to come to the meeting to potentially object or state their case.
So, if we bring it up next meeting, then if nobody's here to object, then we can take an action on it?
That seems reasonable.
Okay, I would second that motion.
If Poppy moved in second, we will take it up next week. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Good, that passes. Now, the complicated one. The estate of Jeffrey Scott Lorita. And I know we were... I don't know if we got any information. We've been trying to find out all the information. How do you want to proceed? Because this is not...
It's very complicated. I would... I feel like we need more information from our fiduciary commissioner because he did give us a recommendation, but we had questions and we weren't able to have enough time with him to answer those questions. So, hopefully, we can do that today. I would also maybe move that we table this till next week.
Second.
Yeah. Poppy moved in second. I agree. All those in favor to table to next week so we can get that information. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I think that's the prudent thing to do. Any other fund fiduciary orders? No. Okay, introduction of new employees. Camp Muffley. We have... Come on down, Amy and Josh, and welcome.
Good morning.
Morning, Amy.
So, this is Josh Curry. Josh goes by Josh.
Josh.
He has previously worked at Bow Park as a seasonal worker, and he comes to us at Camp Muffley as full-time maintenance. Already did a couple hours of leaf blowing this morning. So, we're pretty happy so far. He started on Monday at a rate of $12 an hour.
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And just a quick, how do you like the change? Both of you. One, you came from Bow Park.
Yeah.
So, how... I mean, how do you feel so far? I mean, Josh, I'll put you on the spot.
Yeah. Good. It's stuff I'm used to doing, so.
That's what we like to hear.
There's no shortage of leaves.
Yeah. Amy, how do you like the change?
I'm liking it. I just, you know, while I was sitting here waiting, I just made a reservation for the Assembly Hall for a couple that got married out there. And now they want to rent the Assembly Hall for their child's first birthday.
Oh, great.
So, that's... It's just fun to be a part of that kind of stuff.
And the system's working real well, the reservation system?
Yeah.
Good, because that's been one of our problems.
Yeah, it's, you know, like, it's a little bit slower to put a reservation in, but it's definitely way more functional than anything we've had in the past.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. I'll let you go back to work.
All right.
Okay. Chestnut Ridge Park. Kim Porter Housekeeping transferred to full-time. So, she did agree to it.
Yes. Her official transfer to full-time will be April 1st, 2022. Annual salary, $24,960.
Move to approve?
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do we have any other new employee?
Nope.
Okay. Do we want to suspend the rules for a minute since I see we have a fiduciary... It is back. Do you have any new updated information? Or should... What we have done so far, so you know, we have tabled it for next week to get your information.
Okay.
Okay, so is that okay with you?
I can address it now or next week. Whatever you want to do.
If you just hang out after the meeting and we can...
Yeah.
You give us an update, and then we'll just take it up next week.
Next week. Okay, thank you, because a meeting shouldn't be too long. Okay, thank you very much for getting ahold of... Getting that information. Okay, comments from the public. Do we have anyone who would like to come down and speak to the county commissioner? We're real friendly. Anybody? Okay, seeing none. Everyone looks at each other. We'll close. Ah, now we have the presentation from Susan Riddle, who speaks as quickly as I do. From the New Jersey area. Executive Director of Visit Mountaineer Country CVB. Welcome.
Thank you. Greetings from Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visitors Bureau. We want to thank you for the opportunity for... I brought a guest, Joe Vasekia, our new operations manager with me today. He's doing the public presentation, municipal and county circuit over the next... We started actually last night, and it'll run through the month of April. He'll be doing that with me as part of his ongoing...
Torture.
Yes. I was going to say training, but I don't know that I would call it training. As you know, we are your destination marketing and management organization, and we sell our destination to accomplish our mission of one more night, one more dollar. Today, we're here to present to you our 2021 annual report. This is part... We are required by state code to present this information to all of our partners, municipal and county partners on an annual basis. The report itself is a very broad scope of the work we do for our destination. Thankfully, you all are not unfamiliar with what we do. We constantly try and modify our programs and our messaging in order to constantly maximize the return on the investment of the dollars that we receive through lodging tax. I always like to thank our representatives, President Bloom. We appreciate you serving on the CVB board. For anyone that doesn't know that, our municipal representatives are the critical links throughout the communities that we serve and are our tourism ambassadors, helping us to keep us connected to our local tourism-related opportunities in the areas that we serve. As far as the annual report, 2021 was a year of doing more with less. Although we focused on a regular basis on attracting visitors at least 50 miles outside of our destination, everything we do involves our local partners. Our giveaways, our attraction promotion, our Mountaineer Deal Partners, our events calendar, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One of the new things that you are intimately familiar about is the Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund. I did include a one-page sheet in your annual report that... It's already outdated. I mean, we... The response to this program has been overwhelming and tremendously successful. I'll keep talking about our annual report before I come back to this. But as you see on your one-page summary, there's been more than $284,000 in grants granted to 25 events, which the review committee did through over the last... It hasn't even been a year that we've been doing this. We've estimated of more than 102,000 attendees, estimated around 11,000 hotel rooms, and estimated $1.3 million in direct spend in Montague County, which means that the grant funds themselves generated more than a four-to-one return. And we... Joe, one of Joe's major responsibilities... He's taken responsibility for really... I was kind of treading water with this program with the volume of activity that was involved. Joe's come in and taken ownership of the tourism advancement program. So, he's directly connecting with all of our recipients. We now have a giant dry erase check that everybody gets a photo when they... He's making sure that all this is done so we can message this out. And we are finally getting to the point where we're really enforcing the lead time for events so that we really get the bang for the dollars that are being invested in the program and the efforts that go into maintaining it. In 2021, we also... A big program that we were involved with was the Ascend Program. You all are familiar with the Ascend Program that is through the Outdoor Economic Development Collaborative, Brad and Lee Smith, the tourism department. Your local CVB provided welcome kits using all local vendors for all 53 of the contracted individuals. And we've already made the commitment to provide welcome kits for the next 100 that are coming in the door this year. They were very, very positively received. We went to the business after-hours recently at Gridstone, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and Ascend recipients were in attendance, and they're like, "You're the ones that got those welcome kits." They're using all the little devices, very thoughtful, very destination-engaging kits. So, they weren't cheesy, which is what we were told we weren't supposed to deliver. Nothing cheesy. Our Visit Mountaineer Country app, as you all know, we have the free app at the App Store, Visit Mountaineer Country. We have over 3,000-plus downloads. We only released it in the latter part of 2021. It was actually in the fall. So, that's going on really well. Joe and I attended the... An event at WVU for the Hospitality Advisory Council last Friday, and we had students that were part of interviews. We kind of did like a speed dating exercise. It was interesting. Met a lot of great kids, or young adults, I should say. And they were like, "Wow, you're the ones with the app. We use it all the time." And that's exactly what we want to hear. So, we're promoting that, and that's going really well. And then the leadership role that the CVB has taken on in both the Mountaineer Trail Network, regional authority, as well as the State CVB Association. It's really put us in a different light for not only representing our destination, but our destination being an integral part of decisions that are made as it relates to tourism in North Central West Virginia. So, that's huge. We've also emphasized, especially now that we will have one more staff person. We just had Andrea Antion, our community engagement coordinator. She got a job opportunity she could not pass down. So, she is leaving us the end of next week. And so, we'll be adding back a new person for our community engagement. That's something else that Joe is working on. I really do work at the CVB still. Everything hasn't gone to Joe. I mean, I know it may seem like that, but...
We know.
Appreciate the support. But we're really focusing on increasing our local engagement. I know you all have seen a number of emails from us directly that you probably hadn't seen before.
Right.
We have some new state requirements. We were doing all these things before. We just weren't doing the new reporting requirements. So, we had an audit. We had our annual report. We had all these things. We were accredited. We've been accredited since the accreditation program started. I don't know. We have a whole bunch of plaques on the wall, and each one's worth three years. So, at least 15, 18 years ago. I mean, long time. But you are going to be seeing more from us because there is an emphasis through the state legislature to be more involved in how CVBs are functioning throughout the state. And there's a big diversity between not everybody has a destination marketing and management organization like what we are here. And we're trying to work with all of... Because all the CVBs do play a role. It's just a matter of is everyone dotting their i's and crossing the t's the way they need to? And the... Our Secretary of Tourism is very supportive of all the CVBs that we have. They're the local connection. We just all function a little differently. So, we're trying to improve that across the board. So, transparency is a big goal. I mean, you all... There isn't anything you all don't... That you ask during meetings, after meetings, between meetings, whatever, that you need to know that the CVB doesn't share with you. But we will be attending more meetings. We attend more meetings here than any place because you all are more engaged than... And ask a lot of questions that really help us do what we do better. And we appreciate that. We will be rolling out some new tools. I couldn't leave without mentioning these. Our Tourism Talk series. We started one, and then I'm actually a month behind. We were supposed to get the second one done in February. And honestly, with everything that's going on with February, these new reporting requirements, completing our audit in less than nine... Actually, 60 days from the end of our year, which was kind of crazy. We just kind of had to delay until we get to April. But the Tourism Talk training materials with our Tourism Partner Resource page, that is more resources we're giving to all of our tourism partners as far as educational things, tools, just how to do what they do better, working with us. And we all raise the water in the swimming pool. We are working on a sports index tool for our destination, facility sales, and event attraction. Right now, it's a free platform. Joe's been working with our interns. We right now have four. And that's something else we're doing. We're recruiting new interns because a lot of them are at the end of their term. But it is a... It's essentially a database that we enter all of our facility information, everything from meeting space to golf courses to baseball fields, you name it. Whatever we have, we're entering it into it. And then it essentially gives us a destination score. And then that information... It's the result of people not being able to go to conferences and sell their destination primarily from a sports perspective during COVID. So, they created this digital platform. It is accessible nationally. And we haven't finished it quite yet, but we're getting close. Needless to say, in our destination, what's the number of facilities we have in it? Last like 70-ish? Yeah, there's... Yeah, it keeps going up. And so, now we're in the method of going out to our partners, meeting with them, making sure the information we have is correct. Because just because it's on the internet doesn't mean it's correct, right? So, we're working on that. And then we're also working... Actually, we met this morning. We'll have a non-traditional lodging index, which is really primarily Airbnb, VRBO, cabins, bed and breakfast, those kinds of things. We'll be featuring them. We actually have it on our website now. Right now, we're loading that information in. And the state's experience, not so much here, but in other areas of the state, Airbnbs and VRBOs, they're not in the same umbrella that lodging properties are as far as brand standards and guest experience and all that sort of thing. And they're not easy to get information to them. We have Airbnbs that contact us and ask for guides and whatever. But what we're doing is we're stepping it up. We now have a sub-page. If you go to our stay page, you can go lodging, or you can go cabins, Airbnb, VRBO, bed and breakfast. They all have their own. And then we are gaining this information through this platform, contacting people, and getting their properties also listed on our site so that we can engage with them and provide them the links to the resources that we have. Therefore, every guest has a better experience, and we're able to link them to our local partners, businesses, events, whatever that may be. And actually, tomorrow, we have a... The result of the Tourism Advancement Fund is we are kind of the hub in many regards for... Our events calendar before was a warehouse for all kinds of events. But now, with the Tourism Advancement Fund, if you look at our calendar in our conference room, we mark what's coming up that we know is usually a little bit larger group. I mean, it's not every baby shower or, you know, church picnic, but it's something that's a little bit larger. And our calendar's so busy. We know where we're going to have major traffic problems because of road access. We also know where we're going to have safety problems.
April 23rd.
Yeah, yes. That weekend's the first one, and that's the meeting that's being held tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, we're working... So, as part of the Tourism Advancement Fund, one of the things we asked for was a safety plan with people's events. A lot of them don't have safety plans, but we at least got it on their radar. So, that in turn has turned into conversations around how many events are going on at a particular destination, specifically on the 23rd.
Yeah, could you explain that? Because we're doing so well. And this is what the problem we've always wanted.
Yes.
Now, we have our first major problem. Why don't you just explain what's going on the 23rd?
That weekend, it's the beginning of High Point Raceway, so that's right up in Mount Morris, okay? It's also... There's baseball games. There's swimming meets. There's a track event.
Major track event, yeah.
There's the Grand Bash. It's also the Blue Gold Game. What else am I... That's most of it? Yeah, that's most of it. So, we were noodling around what we do. And Joe and I were talking. I'm like, "Listen, we got to get out in front of this." Now, thankful to the leadership, not only of, you know, Jamie Summerlin... Well, Jamie's here. Jamie and Mike Mosser, who's handling the track event. We've got people that are leaders in events. And so, and they're also concerned about the community. So, they were already having conversations. I talked with Ron Justice this morning on behalf of Mylan Park. That entire exit 155, it's bad on any given day. I mean, just in the mornings, because that's where we are, every morning, every evening. But that weekend, it's going to be...
You should film that exit.
It's going to be a problem. So, tomorrow, we're going to have Jamie invited Colin from WVU to be a representative as it relates to the Blue and Gold Game. We also have individuals with MECA 911, the Sheriff's Department, event coordination, Mylan Park from all aspects. Joe will be there. And we're actually going to develop... We have that data. It's just that nobody's event calendar is really easy to coordinate these things. So, we were talking as a result of this April 23rd, because it's just the first.
Right.
If you look at our calendar, almost every weekend, it is jacked up with events, just one layered on top of another. So, this is going to be an ongoing thing. And we can't have people, whether it be facilities or event coordinators or anything, all go in. Not my problem, because then we all have a problem. I was there for Grand Bash several years ago when Commissioner Bloom was in line for several hours and then came in. I bore his frustration from that disaster all around Grand Bash. So, I pledged that we would not have that again, and we're going to do what we can to regularly get this information out to MECA 911, the Sheriff's Department, and be that catalyst since we are kind of the warehouse for a lot of this information. Because it'll be important, you know, if the baseball game doesn't start till 2 o'clock, you don't have to plan for that event starting, you know, like this weekend. There's a craft show out at Mylan Park. Well, I know those crafters. They come in droves. They literally come in droves. And that exit is a hazard and is constantly having accidents. Yeah, backups, accidents, whether it's on the interstate or at the... You know, actually going on to Chaplain Hill Road. So, I know that's a... That's just something that we saw on our radar and then reached out to try...
It's a positive problem, but it's a problem that we need to deal with.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know...
When you say baseball, Susan, are you talking about baseball at Mylan Park?
Yeah.
Because that is also the 22nd and 23rd is also the day of the Mon County Classic.
Yes.
So, Granville should be aware of that at the ball field. So, would you guys also make sure that you're talking to... Or at least keeping Don Robinson in the loop? Because he's the one that actually is facilitating that with... He's already worked out the dates with WVU, but he's working on that with who... The person that runs the ball field now.
Le... Senada, Leanne.
So, again, there's another...
Leanne Sinott.
Sinott, yeah.
There's another event.
Oh, it's all great problems to have, but we also, you know, we get one chance to make a good impression on people.
Right, and that's why we want to...
And we don't... I mean, I had a lengthy conversation with Ron Justice this morning, and I said, "Listen..." Because I'm also on the Mylan Park Board. Well, everybody wears multiple hats. And I'm like, "Look, we're working with all our partners to bring all this here, and at the same time, we don't... We can't afford to have a safety problem or a PR problem because people are trying to get... Because you know how baseball games go. People plan to be there. They're not necessarily arriving at the park an hour and a half early, just planning on traffic.
Yeah.
So, we don't have that connection made yet, but Joe's going to attend the meeting tomorrow. Then we're going to figure out how we get that information out to people. You know, we have Facebook pages that we use for restaurant notification. We also have another Facebook page for our lodging partners to keep them in the loop when things are going on. Sometimes they get used more than others because they're all busy. But we're going to try... We're going to figure out what's the best that we can do to at least get 911, MECA, and I don't know all the other partners, but at least Don Robinson, we'll reach out to and see. And if you come up with others that you need us to help, you know, in any way we can, we'll do that.
Yeah, because I think off the top of my head, I can't remember the teams, but there's, I think, eight teams. Six of them will be coming from out of the area.
Well, Tammy Woods, who has taken Kate Fanox's position in group sales for us, she's been working for weeks on trying to find additional fields. We have a group, USA Softball, that comes to the area. And I talked to him last year and actually the year before. But they use various and sundry fields. They have talked to us about the condition of fields in our area that they can't use. So, we've given them options to the best of our ability and tried to connect them with others. We could sell bigger tournaments. I mean, and I'm not suggesting that we go out and put in a bunch of new fields or anything like that, but to the extent that we're able to really maximize what facilities we have, if there's availability outside of local use. I mean, the local, you know, ball clubs and whatnot are the ones that do the first thing. But I know, I mean, just what Granville does throughout the season is tremendous. So...
And I think Sean brings up a good idea. Once you come up out of your meeting, you may want to contact those six high schools because they would not... They would not know at all what is really going on. So, just so they're aware of it, so they know the process. Because if not, they're going to get caught in the middle of it, too.
Yeah, and we might need some assistance there because reaching out to these ball teams, they don't always...
Well, Don would do that.
Yeah.
So, if you let him know that.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Are there any questions? You know, I can always talk all day long about this stuff.
And related to that, I know that I've mentioned this to you before, but as you're... As the CVB is working to bring these events to the area, just keep in mind that we have that fund that we specifically can help fund events at the ball field. So...
I talked to Leanne about that yesterday, and I was pleased to know that she was already... She had been in connection with Commissioner Bloom.
Yeah, we have an application... We have a separate application process, but that's also just another tool in your toolbox that you can talk to people about as you're bringing them in.
And that can be anybody, right? And there's no stipulations on who can apply for those funds. It just has to be there.
Thinking out of the box, maybe, could also be used for, on that day, police... You know, for the baseball event, you know, it means that you would need police... for the baseball event, you know, it means that you would need police to do traffic.
I'm a very big outside of the box thinker. So in any way, shape, or form that we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a pot, yeah.
Any questions?
No, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
You really appreciate the positive. And so good to see the numbers after the last two years where we've, you would come to us very concerned, and you said, let's just get through this two years.
Yeah.
And I want to say, I want to compliment the two county commissioners with me, that we saw what, we heard you, we funded what was needed, and now we've backed out, and you're going very strong.
Yes. And we also went with a new auditor this year, and they did some changes to the accounting I won't go into the weeds, but it really, if you have any specific questions about the numbers, I would be happy to discuss them. But it really made our numbers look a lot different than what, they're not cash basis. We'll just say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're already invested.
All righty, thank you all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. It's nice to have a positive presentation once in a while.
And I didn't ask for anything.
I know. That's what's even more positive. That's great. Colleen Brants, come on down. How are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Real good.
I have the grant application for the VOCA grant. We're requesting one hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-seven, so you'll have to sign that application, the standard conditions and assurances, and the federal standard conditions and assurances.
Move to approve the president signing the documents as presented?
Second.
Poppy moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Any other correspondents?
Grants?
No other grants.
I mean, grants. I'm already moving to, any correspondence?
Yes.
Okay.
You all have received an invitation. It's really a countywide invitation. April the ninth, M-Snap is going to be having, I'm not sure what, they're calling it a celebration. I'm not sure what exactly has preempted it, but it's from one to five at the Morgantown Mall. They're going to be having auctions, special vendors, animal groups, pet adoptions, education. Million reasons to celebrate, it says.
It's April ninth, right?
Yeah.
I will be there at three-thirty because I'm judging something.
Oh.
Don't know what I'm judging, but.
We also received an email yesterday morning from a Kayla Richard, and it's regarding the DOH road work that's being done on one nineteen Grafton Road just before the I sixty-eight intersection. I think you all received that as well. I don't know if you want to say anything.
Did you forward that on to DOH?
I did forward it, and I just got a response this morning that says that supposedly that ditching work is now done and completed. That's all, that's what I received.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, we just wanted to make sure that DOH was aware.
And I did send that information back to the.
And there was a number of DOH people that were on that email.
Yes, yes.
That's all.
That's it, I don't have anything.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Unfinished business.
None.
Moving to new business. Consideration to approve a letter of support for the joint MMPO and WV Department of Transportation's application for raised funding to develop designs to upgrade Green Bag Road.
Move to approve the letter of support as presented?
Second.
The poppy moving second, and this is something that the county commissioners had asked Bill Austin to consider, which would continue from Lucky Lane on all the way down to Don Knotts Boulevard. So we have the development, they would start to do the design, they would get the final end of the Green Bag Road. So once we have everything in place, we would have one shot that would go down and hopefully entice the truckers and other people to use that road and go right down to Don Knotts Boulevard.
Perhaps approve the hump?
Yeah, approve the hump.
At Morgantown, out from the old Morgantown Motel. That's a dangerous condition.
Yes. So we're very excited about that, and there's a real good possibility that they will support that. So that's the explanation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Consideration to approve requisition number sixty for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and will be paid to MuniCap.
Move to approve requisition sixty as presented?
Second.
Poppy moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve requisition number four for the University Town Center Series twenty-twenty Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, also paid to MuniCap.
Move to approve requisition four as presented?
Second.
Poppy moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other new business?
None.
Okay, moving to reports from any elected officials or department supervisors? All right, see you none. Jeff, if you want to go first?
Just, we, in the last week, we've spent a lot of time with the MPO, and the MPO or in the advisory committee to prioritize projects. Just, it's important to note, and it's been pointed out many times, that we as an MPO don't actually control the projects that are being presented or the design. We prioritize them based upon what we feel the priority is, what should get the attention first. So as it comes to actual design of intersections, roundabouts, flyovers, bridges, the MPO doesn't actually have any input in the design itself as far as final approval. So I think there's been some miscommunication out there that that committee, that group has more power than it actually has. But we're working very hard with the DOH to try to get these projects to Mon County and get them completed and improve everyone's daily commutes and events, as we talked about with exit one fifty-five. That's all I've got.
Okay, sure.
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had a broadband call, and then we, as Commissioner Arnett mentioned, we had a special MMPO meeting. Friday, we had our special meeting for budget approval, and then we had staff reports. Today's pretty much a regular day. Tomorrow, I have a Health Department Board of Health meeting, and then there's a start of the League of Women Voter Forums. Actually, they start tonight. And there's this whole schedule out there for the public to pay attention. Tonight's the BOA, Board of Education Candidates. Tomorrow would be the Conservation District Supervisor and County Commission. Then on the sixth, there'll be the Senate Candidates for District Two and Thirteen. Then the House of Delegate Candidates, April seventh, will be District Seventy-seven and Seventy-eight. Seventy-nine and eighty will be on the thirteenth, and eighty-one and eighty-two will be on the fourteenth. So it's important for the public to pay attention. And I appreciate the League of Women Voters putting on these forums so they can get a look at the individuals that will be on the ballot. Tomorrow, we have staff reports, and it's actually a fairly light week after all the work through the budget. I do, I do want to thank Susan and Joe. Joe, welcome to the C V B. I've known Joe a long time, and Susan, you have a catch there. So Joe will do a good job for you. I do appreciate all the work that you've done, Susan, through the past couple of years. I know we've worked closely through the pandemic to try to, you know, you guys, at one time, you were a C V B of one.
Yeah.
You know, but, but we got, we got through that, and I'm happy that the commission was able to help you to start, you know, kickstarting the economy and start kickstarting hotel and utilization in the area. And the Tourism Advancement Fund is just another, another wonderful example of where we work together. We can actually do so much more with the little dollars that we have. So thank you for all your work in that. I really do appreciate it. And Jamie, thank you. Because between the C V B and Jamie, you guys pretty much have all the events covered in the county, and you guys are both doing wonderful things for this county, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I also agree. I'm thrilled to be on that board. Between that board and pantry plus more board, I don't think I've ever been on two better boards of people who, when there's a problem or question or concern, the board goes into it, then they put the pressure on you all to make it happen. And I'm really pleased, Joe, you're going to be really pleased with the connection. And talking about the Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund, I mean, I'm going to go on record, then I will go back to the board and say, we're doing our part, maybe the board can put some more funds in there because it's going so well.
Yeah, we're out of money. We're out of money even.
We've already gone next.
Yeah.
We didn't, we knew it was going to be good. We didn't realize how well it was going to take and it needed. So I think it's a real win-win-win for everybody. I'm real pleased. And the final statement, if you could keep us informed, I'm real glad you're having that meeting tomorrow, because I believe everyone needs to share the cost. And again, I'm only one commissioner, but I would like you to take that message back that we believe if we're having six events, it should not just be on one event. And I believe that's what you're saying. So hopefully, they will all get together and work it out. And we're excited, so we don't run into the problems that we ran into before.
The other problem is, I don't know, I mean, didn't even know, but there's, there's not a lot of extra people to traffic control. I mean, you know, so these things have to be planned in advance. It's not like we can just pull people out of the wings at the eleventh hour. I mean, Jamie's real good at pulling people out of the wings at the eleventh hour.
It's all right, suspend the rules, I'll let Jamie. Did you want to just respond to that? If you want to come down here that way.
Absolutely.
So the public knows that we're preparing for that day.
Yes, Jamie Summerlin, nine-eight Whipkey Lane, got on Creative. So obviously, I work very closely with the C V B and with the events we have going on. And when I was informed about a couple of the other events that were happening at the park that day, that's when the phone calls started with the events, whether it's been from the rally in the past to the Grand Bash when we've had it and others. We've always made it a point to meet with MECA and the Sheriff's Office to deal with traffic management and control as well as parking out at the park. With us having multiple events that day, phone calls were made to try to get everybody from WVU involved. Because at the end of the day, off of that exit, you could have fifteen thousand people going east off of Star City exit and ten thousand people going west, all around the same three to four hour time period. So it's a nightmare anyways with dealing with traffic out there, let alone putting all those people in there at the same time. So I just appreciate, you know, the C V B stepping up to help facilitate that and us being able to meet out at the park. And hopefully, all of the organizers will be represented at the meeting tomorrow to be able to discuss those issues. And as you suggested, that we all share in that. Because one event shouldn't absorb all of that, especially when we're all trying to make the community better. So appreciate the time. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
No, and with the work you guys are doing, there's going to be more April twenty-third.
Yes, that's right. So let's start working, getting it in place so we know we have a system rather than, you know, last minute emergency.
Right. It's always been requested for us, as we've submitted applications for the events, to put the emergency management plan together, the traffic management. And because we hold such large events, we've always tried to facilitate that. It's just going to get worse as time goes on, which is a good problem to have, as you said.
And it could have been worse. We had somebody that wanted to schedule a boxing event.
Yes.
At our facility.
Right.
So we had to stand up and say, no, it didn't make sense. And, you know, kudos to our event, our venue manager, Rachel Mitchell, who was working with Mylan Park. And again, even at that level, was coordinating events. So there was, the communication was going on, because it very easily could have been overlooked and booked, and then you have another nightmare.
Yes, absolutely. And I would encourage any other event promoters, managers, people wanting to put events on in the community to stay in contact with the C V B. Because that's where we're able to make that communication happen and facilitate any meetings or deal with any issues prior to them showing up and rearing their heads on event day. So they certainly do a great job of helping make that happen, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[1704.88]